The time having arrived, I call a special meeting of the City Council to order for today, June 17, 2019. Please stand and salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, Council Sullivan.
I'd like everybody, please, please stand, stay standing, and I'd like to take a moment of silence. Elias Lianis, who, great, great Brockton business owner, Legion Parkway, his family, Ward One residence, he passed away suddenly. A lot of us just attended the wake, so if we could remember Mr. Lianis, that'd be great. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Counselors, before we begin, I got a call from Council Cruz, who is still on the man's after a little surgery. And Council Monahan, who was called in to work, so he won't be here today either. I hope you all had a good week and a half off as we come back to deal with the issues of the budget. That being said, Mr. Clerk, the agenda, please.
We have the call of the meeting.
That will be accepted and placed on fire.
The office's return of notice.
Accepted and placed on fire.
We have the report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of June 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 2019.
That, too, shall be accepted and placed on fire.
The Brockton fiscal '20 budget, public hearing was held on Monday, June 3rd, 2019, at 6:30 PM, at which time any interested party in the fiscal budget were welcome to come speak on the budget. The public hearing was closed and the budget process began with the mayor and department heads answering questions on their budgets. This discussion of the budget took place on June 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 2019. It was established that any amendments to this budget will be made and voted on in the upcoming special meeting of the City Council on June 17, 2019, at 6:00 PM, in the council chambers, second floor of City Hall, 45 School Street, Brockton. And all other related matters, we have the report of the Public Safety Committee for its meeting of June 5th, 2019.
That will be accepted and placed on fire.
We have the petition of In Good Health, Inc., 1200 West Chestnut Street, Brockton, for retail marijuana license at 1200 West Chestnut Street, Brockton, David Noble, president. The licenses for retail manufacturing and cultivation. The owner of the property is M&amp;P Realty Trust. This was favorable with a request for the item to be heard on June 17, 2019, at the special City Council meeting by a motion of Council Monahan and seconded by Council to render court. The motion carried unanimously.
Mr. President.
Council Falwell.
I'd like to move that we take the matter of In Good Health out of order and hold that first.
Second, second.
Second.
Motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? We shall do. Matter... I think the matter has been read.
Yep.
For...
Open here.
It's a...
Favor.
The time has arrived, and I call this open meeting, open. And if there's anybody here in favor of the petitioner, please come forward and state your name and speak on the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. We appreciate... This is Attorney John McCleskey, representing In Good Health, and we appreciate your taking us out of order and having us on the agenda for this special meeting this evening. Before you is an application for recreational licenses and wholesale and grow. And, as you know, this matter came before the council a few weeks back and was referred to the Public Safety Committee. We did meet a couple of weeks ago and presented further evidence in support of the application, including testimony from the Brockton Police Department and the Fire Department, engaged the committee in some discussion. And I think, at this point, we've addressed all of the issues, including those that are in the new ordinance that was recently approved by the council. And it's further been fully vetted before the planning board. We've been, not on this, but we've been before the zoning board of appeals on at least three occasions for a special permit onto the medical side and have gone through all of the security aspects of the business. The CCC in Boston looks at In Good Health as one of the primary models of marijuana manufacturing and sales. And based upon everything, we'd respectfully request that you approve the licenses this evening.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak on behalf of the petitioner? Anyone?
No.
Going once, going twice?
Unless you have some questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I declare that portion closed. Is anybody here in opposition to the petition? In opposition? Going once, going twice? I declare that portion closed. Now, the motion is on granting by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, if I could.
Mr. Counselor.
Mr. President, if I might, I just want to make a point that, as everybody knows, this particular business is located on West Chestnut Street, which is in Ward Three. And I'm urging my fellow councilors to vote in support of this. This is the first recreational marijuana facility that will be opening in the city of Brockton. Due diligence was with the ordinance committee some months ago in making sure that all and everyone that was applying would have to come through the process of coming to City Council, which they have done, as well as the process that they've also started to do with the cannabis committee as well. So, at this point in time, I commend them and congratulate them in the work that's been done. Look forward to them continuing with business within this city. We're far behind from where we should be in bringing in some revenue, so I would just think that for anybody to not vote in favor of this would not be acting in the best interest of the city of Brockton. And as we all know, recreational marijuana is a law, and we need to start to move forward with it. So, I just ask my councilors to please, please support this in this effort. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. As I said earlier, the motion is on granting by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Bordegaard?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Ari?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, zero in opposition.
The license is granted.
Mr. President, I move reconsideration. I hope it is not...
Second. A motion for reconsideration has been properly made and seconded. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? It carries. Thank you, and best of luck. Mr. Clerk, number four, please.
Just want to move on to the budget, don't you? The Brockton fiscal '20 budget, as stated, the public hearing was held on Monday, June 3rd, 2019, at 6:30 PM, at which time any interested party in the fiscal budget were welcome to speak on the budget. The public hearing was closed and the budget process began with the mayor and department heads answering questions on their budgets. This discussion of the budget took place on June 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 2019. It was established that any amendments to this budget will be made and voted on in the upcoming special meeting of the City Council on June 17, 2019, at 6:00 PM, in the council chambers, second floor, City Hall, 45 School Street.
Counselors, do we have any motions relative to reductions or cuts?
Yes.
Counselor Bordegaard?
What, am I the first here? I was... Well, I had two to submit at present here for the planning, and, yeah, two for the planning department. Would you like me to read them?
Yeah, please.
Okay, all right. This is where I was debating here. First of all, there was a proposal for a Main Street manager for $40,000, and that was funded, so I was asking to deduct that. And then there was another for $80,000 for a new planning, senior planner. So I had both of those on here. And we provide you with the information for this. Thank you.
See those?
I mean, sure, at some point, our city would be ready for that, but at this point, I just think it's not fiscally sound.
Okay, she's all right. What did she want?
So, it's $120,000 from the personal services.
Exactly, yes, yes.
On planning, but she's, she's wrong down here.
I was debating. It's too...
Reduce it by $40,000. She wants it by $120,000. You'll have to clarify that.
There's eighty on the other one, sir.
Eighty on the other.
Did she put it on the other? Okay.
Mr. President.
Counsel Sullivan.
On the motion, I just, if nobody objects, I just want to have a follow-up question for Mr. Clarkson. There was some, some questions. Remember about the 40 grand and then the additional 40 grand that was going to be subsidized from B.R.A.? And I was going to meet with Troy, but unfortunately, the mayor's dad passed away, so I just didn't know if he had any opinion from Phil Nazarella from Solicitor's Office relative to that. Good evening.
If there are no objections, Mr. Clarkson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and councilors. As a follow-up to our discussion at that meeting and the question raised by Counselor Sullivan, I did have a conversation with Attorney Bridges, Assistant City Solicitor, who is working on a written opinion that she will provide. I'll offer a synopsis of it. At that meeting, I had suggested that it would, in my opinion, be proper for any entity to make a donation to the city and then for the money to be expended by the department. She concurred with that opinion, and so that's the recommendation that we'll continue to make. Obviously, if the money is not approved in the budget, the point becomes moot for that specific position, but I think it was a good opportunity to have that discussion for perhaps future collaborations.
Mr. Clarkson, do you have any guess at when she'll have that generated, the opinion?
When we discussed it, she had hoped to have it completed by the end of this week.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Sullivan. The motion's on the floor to reduce the planning...
Do we need to second it?
What is it?
The motion is made.
Nobody made a second.
Second on the motion.
Second, I second the motion.
Motion's been properly made and properly seconded to cut the... Counsel Sullivan.
Just briefly. You know, I concur with Counselor Bordegaard. I think at some point, a Main Street manager and $80,000 for another member of that department would be perfectly appropriate. But I'm going to go back to something that the chairman mentioned about three years ago, and that was, let's do something, let's, let's get it done, and let's show the public that we have really started to make some strides. And we do have a parking garage, we do have some housing going downtown, we, we do hopefully have a Brockton Beer Company coming to Frederick Douglass Avenue. But I'm mindful of the fact that we, I think, authorized $300,000 in a grant to study downtown two-way traffic. I have no idea what happened to that. It just seems like we never follow through. And, you know, it's hard sitting here because we know everyone. I mean, it's a small city. It's not like Boston, where you've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of department heads. We know everyone, we like them, we work with them, but unfortunately, we have a statutory responsibility to take a look at the budget and to make sure that it's being expended in a way that yields benefits for our residents. And at this time, based on what I've seen in the last three and a half years, I don't think we're ready to take this next step yet. I, I want to see something more than housing, something more than, than a parking garage. I'd like to see some jobs generated. I'd like to see the planning department kick it into high gear, and then let's evaluate what they really need. But I'm not ready to jump for this yet, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Mr. President, pardon me.
For clarity, we should tell the councilors to get up, make their cut.
I'll be happy to correct any of my errors.
Take a vote, then move on to the next one.
I agree with you. Madam Counselor.
On the motion, Mr. President.
Go ahead, sir.
Just, you know, and if I'm, if I'm wrong on this, Mr. Clarkson, please correct me. But we can't, we can, we can express an interest in seeing what we would like to cut, but we cannot pull the money from that position directly. We're pulling it just from, you know, from a larger pool of money.
Correct.
So that, that position could still exist with other money still in the department. We cannot specifically cancel out a position just like that, right?
Right.
Yep.
Right, but I also, I'm going to go back to what's something that Counsel Falwell said last year, was that if there's an intent by this council to reduce a budget by $120,000, that the administration wouldn't just basically go out and take it from someplace else, knowing what the, what the will of the council is.
Yep.
You know, so. Counsel Bordegaard, I believe you need to read this out so that we know exactly what we're taking these amounts from.
Oh, okay, I'll be happy to.
So...
This'll give you a chance to do the math.
We have... We have... By the way.
Yes, well, that's what I did.
We're just running a commercial right now. Counsel, you ready?
I didn't know if you wanted me to rewrite.
Just read what you have.
It became $120,000.
No, no, but what's on the, from what, the top as well? From where you're taking it from?
It was from the planning department, yes.
Okay.
Personal services other than overtime. Yeah, that part I had said. And I had said for the two, you know, proposed positions. So it came to 120, and the amount at the beginning for the salaries with these included was 424,222. So if you subtract 120,000 from it, you have 3,304,222. Here we go, yes.
Thank you. Is that in a form of a motion?
Yes.
And Counsel Darren Court, you still seconding the motion?
Yes.
Okay. A motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, please.
I'll be happy to rewrite this.
Counsel Ian Ari, did you have a, a cut or your...
Do I have a cut? No, there's not much to cut in this budget, so I have no cuts.
All right.
Thank you.
Counsel Falwell.
Okay, I, I have a few items that I want to offer for consideration. Page 156 in the budget, it's under the Law Department, and it's line item 531-709 for That is for the education equity suit, and as all of you may have noticed, as of June 16th, there is a group that filed a lawsuit regarding state aid for public schools. I certainly support anything and everything we can do to bring funding into the Brockton public schools, but you'll notice in this article that we are not a part of that lawsuit. And as a matter of fact, there is a specific quote in this, in this news article...
From yesterday's paper.
Which says, "Tripp Jones, the lead strategist working with Brockton, Worcester, and New Bedford officials on their potential lawsuit, said his group may still file a lawsuit of their own, but are also working with the state legislature." So I have no problem, at a future time, giving the Law Department $198,000 to help our kids, but I'm not going to throw it into that budget where apparently we're not actively pursuing that, and I think it's premature to do that. I think we ought to preserve this funding and use it at some point when it's really needed. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'll second that.
All right, a motion has been made on the floor and seconded. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Where's the cut? What's the cut? Dennis.
Math is not my strong point, no.
Dennis.
Dennis?
95688.
I ain't looking.
Mr. Chairman, I'll need just a minute before I go on to the next one.
Yeah, I used mine.
Counsel Rodriguez, you have a... I have one.
Yes.
What, I mean, you still have this going?
Still, I think we're still doing...
You still have this going?
We're still having that one.
Yes.
I'll sit down.
Minus 98469. What were we, what were we total? Is that what we...
Waiting for him to see what the actual amount is and what the net figure will be, what the difference is.
That look right?
Then we'll have to take a vote on it.
Right.
Let's see if we're reducing it.
Do I have a shot recess?
We should give this back.
Want to take a shot, just a shot recess? Back in session, Counsel Falwell? Yes, Mr. President. With respect to the Law Department budget for fiscal year 2020, I move to reduce line item 531-709, which contains $198,469. I move to strike that amount, which will reduce the appropriation for ordinary maintenance services from $895,688 to $697,219.
The difference of?
Motion. Has the motion been seconded?
Second.
Let's have the difference of.
The difference will be $198,469.
$98,649. Okay, now you...
Okay. Motion was made and seconded. All in favor of that? Opposed? Passes?
Yep.
Okay. We don't need to read anything else, right?
No.
Counselor...
Let him go back there.
Next, anybody else with a...
Want me to keep going? Yeah, if you've got something else there.
I co-sign with, with Will.
Okay, I, the next one, councilors, is page 202, under Public Property. And it's going to be line item 589-000. 589-000 for $120,000. Public property capital outlay. As I understand it, this was placed in the budget in order to perhaps move some city departments from City Hall. One of them would be public property, there might be some others. I'm cutting this because I don't think we should take public property out of City Hall, away from engineering, away from the assessor's office, those, away from planning. All of those departments function cohesively with respect to zoning board of appeals issues, planning board issues. And in addition, public property has all of the various inspections, plumbing, electrical, building permits, and if we were to send them over to the district attorney's office, frankly, I don't think most people in the city know the DA's office unless you've been a defendant, you're a criminal attorney, or you worked for them. And so we would be sending people from the east side, through the center of the city, over to the DA's office. We don't know what the leasing costs are, we don't know what the costs are to build out that building, to make it habitable. And in addition, we'd be doing it at a time when we're going to be taking down the Kresge Building, strike that, the Ganley Building, so traffic is certainly going to be congested in that area. I would think parking will be affected. So, do some city departments need additional space? Absolutely. Should the, should the administration get together with, with the stakeholders and determine what some of the options might be? Absolutely. But I'm in favor of cutting this by $120,000, and I would so move. Motion. Motion's been made and seconded that we're cutting public property by $120,000, correct? This is capital outlay, so it might be...
It's a change of two, did he tell you?
$120,000 from, you can use from 120 to zero. Mr. President, if I've done this correctly, and forgive me, this is a, this is a capital outlay on page 202, so I would move to reduce 120,000 by the full amount of 120,000, which would leave an amount of zero in that line item for public property capital outlay, 589-000. Motion was made and seconded on that. All in favor? Opposed? Passes?
Next.
I, I have a couple more.
Let me do this one.
Yeah, go ahead. Counsel Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I hereby move to reduce from the Law Department, under personal services other than overtime, the account by $433,324, and the amount will be reduced from $895,688 to $462,364.
Second.
And, Mr. President, the reason why I'm actually submitting this cut to the budget is that we are running a city that honestly is out of control when it comes to consultants. I am not against providing the Law Department consulting money, but I want to make sure that the public and us have some sort of an understanding and, and basically accountability as to where these, these funds are being used. And that's the reason why I'm submitting this, and I hope that my fellow councilors will support this endeavor.
On the motion.
Count.
What is, what is the actual bottom line, though, coming to the department? Did you...
It's the personal services other than overtime, where the consultant is.
How much was the cut?
The total amount again was, counsel, I'm sorry?
It was to reduce it by $433,000, basically leaving, hopefully leaving that account with $50,000. And again, I just want to make sure that for the folks that are watching us at home, we're not cutting the budget, but basically putting some restrictions in how these funds are being used.
How much?
Was it second?
Yes.
It was second. Counsel Sullivan.
On the motion, thank you, Mr. President. Counselors, as I said, and I've said this every year for 14 years, Law Department needs to be staffed at a higher rate. We need to treat it like a law firm. City of Quincy does it, New Bedford, Fairhaven, Fall River, Haverhill, I mean, the city of Boston, I mean, it has a corporation law department there. So with this, with this cut in mind, I'm hopeful that some of these funds will be used to bring more staffed in, because as Mr. Nazarella said it, they're working the best they can with what they have, but they're definitely short-staffed for the city of Brockton. So I will support this, but I'm hopeful that some money will be used to bring some shop lawyers to work for the city of Brockton. It's, it's way overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
And that's not to say we don't have shop lawyers here in the city of Brockton. I say bring more in. More the merrier. Thank you.
All right, the motion was made and, and seconded. All in favor? Hands up high. Opposed? It carries.
Let's, let's get some clarity on... Moses is...
Mr. President, do you have any more?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
He's the only one that... Moses is all set.
No, no, but we want to know what is your actual cut and what does it leave?
I gave it to Shay.
That's what she's doing now, but before we go on to it, so we don't lose the...
I figured it all out. I was kind of really...
Okay, so she's got, she's doing now.
You got it.
Counselor, you ready for Counsel Falwell?
Well...
Wait for...
Let's wait till, if you can wait one second, let's...
Yep.
Because at the end, we're going to have to add these and amend the entire budget. Okay, so what did he cut it by?
Cut it by...
433,000?
324.
324, okay. Okay.
I'll say it.
Counsel Falwell? Yes, Mr. President. This is going to refer to page 272 in the budget book, and it's D.S.A.L., line item And this is for the amount that is paid to Aquaria. And I want to make it very clear that the comments tonight have no animus towards Aquaria. This is strictly a mathematical exercise based on information that is public record and which they file under penalties of perjury. In 2017, the most number of gallons pumped by Aquaria was 3.256 million gallons per day, and that occurred on 7/20...
bring more in, more the merrier, thank you.
All right, the motion was made in, in second. All in favor? Hands up high. Opposed? It carries.
Let's, let's get some clarity on Moses.
Mr. President, do you have any more?
He's the only one that, Moses is all set.
No, no, but we wanna know, what is your actual cut, and what does it leave?
I gave it to Shane.
That's what she's doing now, before we got on to it, so we don't lose the.
I figured it all out, I was kind of really.
Okay, so she's got, she's doing now. You ready for, Counselor? You ready for Counselor Fowell?
Well, let's wait till, if you can wait one second, let's.
Yep.
Because at the end, we're gonna have to add these and amend the entire budget. Okay, so what did he cut it by?
Cut it by $433,000. Three hundred and twenty-four.
Three hundred and twenty-four, okay. Okay.
I'll say.
The next one, though.
Counselor Fowell?
Yes, Mr. President, this is going to refer to page 272 in the Budget Book, and it's D.S.A.L., line item 529412, and this is for the amount that is paid to Aquaria. And I want to make it very clear that the comments tonight have no animus towards Aquaria. This is strictly a mathematical exercise based on information that is public record and which they file under penalties of perjury. In 2017, the most number of gallons pumped by Aquaria was 3.256 million gallons per day, and that occurred on 7/27/2017. The 2018 report is not out yet, it's usually filed within the last few days of June. They are obligated under the contract, and I have pages attached here, if anyone would like to see it, they are obligated to be at 3.81 million gallons per day, and in June, July, and August, we could actually ask them to pump an extra half a million gallons per day. So, what I have done is I have taken the 3.27, 3.256 million gallons, and I bounced that against a 3.81, and they were 14.5% below what they're supposed to be. So, I have taken the amount in the budget that we're supposed to pay them, and I've reduced it by 14.5%. And frankly, I hope they litigate it. I hope they come to us and they say, you're not meeting your obligation, because I think we will have, once and for all, some arbitrator or some court decide who is right. Are we in fact having them live up to the contract that was signed many years ago? Now, that would, that would remove 839,721 dollars from that line item, so it would go from 5,791,180 to 4,951,459.
Second.
Now, if the worst happened, and somehow someone said, you know, you've gotta keep paying even though they're not doing what they're supposed to do, we still have the funding, and we do have a competent law department that should be able to go into court with the set of facts that's available. If they're available to me, they should be available to the Law Department and argue on behalf of our residents. I think we owe the residents this, I am convinced that Aquaria can't pump what they're obligated to pump, and it's really time to, to hold their feet accountable, we meet all of our obligations to them, they need to meet their obligations to us.
Thank you, Counselor, you're still, you're still doing your second, right?
Yes.
A motion has been properly made in second, all those in favor? All those oppose? Motion carries.
Can I catch my breath for a minute, if anyone else has a, has a cut?
Counselor Nacastro, do you have a, a reduction?
There were several departments that listed positions as vacant, unfunded, and I understood that vacant, unfunded means that we're not funding them, and yet, the amount of salary for those positions was listed in the column and was carried forward, and so I have a few of those that I would like to.
Do you want, Mr. Clarkson, to come up and try to explain as to why that said unfunded versus funded, yet it's still carried in the amounts? Or are you beyond that?
All right, we can give it a whirl.
Mr. Clarkson, I, I too noticed that there's quite a few items on the, on the budget that basically said unfunded, but yet there were amounts, the funded amounts listed in the, in those positions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, so I believe we had some discussion about this during the budget hearings. We, in putting together this budget, frankly, mostly as a function of my arrival in late February, continued some of the nomenclature that's typically been used in the past, I would agree that that is confusing, so.
Yes.
What we plan to do is to actually work over the next year to put together a budget that's compliant with the Government Finance Officers Association criteria, that I think will make it clearer, so I think the vacant, unfunded represents a position that perhaps was unfunded in the past, all I can tell you is that we will strive to really clean up some of that language moving forward, but that we, we wanted to honor the format that had been used previously so that councilors were comfortable with it.
Counselor Nacastro?
Thank you. It was my understanding that if it was listed as vacant, unfunded, it wasn't funded.
Well, I, I would just point you to each individual position, and if there's an amount of money that's suggested for appropriation next to it, it is proposed to be a position that's funded.
Then why would it be listed that way?
I would refer you back to the explanation I just offered.
Okay, well, but yet there are other places where it says vacant, funded, and the number is included.
So, I would refer you back to the comments I, I just made, I mean, so there, there are some formatting, formatting issues that we found when we were putting the budget together that we'd like to address in the interest of getting you a budget on time. I think we, we continued with some of that nomenclature that, again, was as confusing to me as it is to you, so I think you can use as a rule of thumb, if a position has a suggested appropriation alongside it, then it is proposed to be a position that's funded for fiscal year 2020.
Point of, point of information through you, Mr. President.
Go ahead, sir.
This could just be a script miserror, it could, it could have been vacant, funded, but they're just, just an error in how it was printed or typed out, which would explain the money next to it as well.
I, I can assure you of one thing, and that is, if there is a proposed appropriation next to a position, regardless of what the nomenclature is, it is proposed for funding for the next fiscal year.
Counselor Nacastro, you still have a floor?
Thank you. That just doesn't seem right to me, and that seems very confusing, and it happened here six or seven times, and the numbers total, I don't know, north of $500,000, and it's just a lot of money, and, and that's confusing, I would be inclined to reduce the budget by these amounts, and then if you need this, come back to us.
Well, I would certainly urge that you not do that, I, I've stated it several times now that I agree that it's confusing, that we honored the spirit of the format that had been used in the past so that the council was comfortable with it, and agreed that we would work on addressing some of those issues moving forward, so we put together, I think, our team, along with the mayor's office, a budget that is fiscally conservative and very mindful of the need to keep our spending down, so the positions that I put forward for your consideration were ones that, based on my experience, not just here in Brockton, but over the last 25 years or so, are considered to be necessary and important, so I would ask that you not reduce those positions simply because of a formatting issue within the budget, that those positions are real and necessary for the sound operation of, of the government.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson.
Counselor, do you have any additional ones that?
I do. I do.
You still have the floor?
I hereby move to reduce the DPW Engineering Budget, this is on page 109, there's items listed as for stormwater.
Okay, you can do it, okay.
Personal Services Other Than Overtime, I would like to reduce the account by 167,741.
Second.
Motion has been.
On the motion?
On the motion.
Just for clarification purposes, is this, again, we had three long nights of this, but is, are these the, through you, Mr. President, Counselor Nacastro, are these the three positions that the ordinance hasn't even been submitted to the ordinance committee as of yet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. A motion has been properly made in second, all those in favor? All those oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you have another one, ma'am?
I do.
Go for it.
Page 145, Human Resources. There were two new positions listed as vacant, unfunded, totaling 114,042, and I would like to reduce the budget by that amount.
I, I'm sorry, I was distracted, which budget is that?
This is Human Resources, page 143, and onward.
145.
Personal Services Other Than Overtime. On page one, I'm sorry, page 145, I didn't have my glasses on, those threes and those fives look alike. I, I don't think we can afford these positions at this time, I, I'm amenable to something in the future.
To do after this is done is recess, check those figures, my first.
Go ahead, ma'am, you still have, you have to read it from what you're taking it from.
Okay, I, I did read it, I hereby move to reduce from the Human Resources Department, Personal Services Other Than Overtime, two items that are marked vacant, unfunded, new positions, we'd be reducing the account by 114,092.
Second.
What, what's the total number?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, the appropriation in that account is. Well, those, those two items total 114,042.
What num, where are the?
So, it's reduced from 220,732 to 106,640, does that sound right?
Nope.
Yeah, the 384. I, I'm working it off, 145, it has 384.
Just, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, just as a point of information, I think if you look on page 145, the total Personal Services would be 384560, so if you back out 114092, I believe you end up with 270468, 270,468. But I will defer to Attorney Resnick.
That sounds right to me.
And just, on the motion?
On the motion, sir.
On the motion, just for my colleagues, we had the Collins Institute do a report on Human Resources. Interestingly enough, they did not recommend hiring an Assistant Director of HR, they recommended hiring a Senior Human Resources Generalist, which would be a pay grade much below an Assistant Director, and I think that would be the appropriate way to go, is to have a brand-new Director of HR, I don't believe she's even been here a year yet, let her get her bearings on exactly what we're doing and how we do it, any improvements we want to make, and then certainly entertain some motion or some request for an appropriation to bring in an appropriate staff member, but I'm not in favor of doing something that is contrary to the very report that the city commissioned, and, and did not recommend an Assistant DHR. Thank you.
All right, a motion has been made in properly second, all those in favor of the reduction, all those oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Fowell?
I, I have a couple of minor ones. DPW Sewer Enterprise Account, page 260, 514300, $9,035 for Holiday, there hasn't been a penny spent this year.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it's cost-saving, so I, I move to reduce the DPW Enterprise Sewer Account from Personal Services Other Than Overtime from 1,513,853 to 1,504, 1,504,818.
Second.
A motion has been properly made in second, all those in favor of the reduction? All those oppose? Can we do a roll call on that one, ma'am?
ASAC? Yes. Beauregard? Yes. Darrencourt?
Yes.
Ianary?
No.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
No.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
You have six in the affirmative, three in the negative.
Motion carries. Next one, sir.
Mr. President, I basically have the same thing in the DPW Water Enterprise Account, page 269, 514300, Holiday, that's a $10,000 line item, Personal Services Other Than Overtime, there's been no money spent this year or last year out of that line item. Nothing, zero, so. So, I, my motion is to reduce the Water Enterprise Account, line item 514300, by $10,000, that would reduce it from 2,682,233 to 2,672,233.
Second.
A motion has been properly made in second, all those in favor with the reduction?
Roll call vote, Mr. President?
Roll call vote, it is.
No. Beauregard? Yes. Darrencourt?
Yes.
Ianary?
No.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
No.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
That's five in the affirmative, four in the negative.
The motion carries. Next one, sir.
The next one is Counselor Sullivan and I both submit this, this is Police, Personal Services, Overtime, let me get you the Budget Book page, pardon me.
191.
191, thank you. So, just for our colleagues, it's 191. And there isn't anyone here who doesn't support giving the police all of the resources they need, however, you will notice that the department head, the chief, put in for a certain amount of overtime, and the mayor increased it by $200,000. In addition, we have 25 or 26 patrol positions that are vacant, we have 17 officers who will be going to the police academy, that leaves eight or nine positions that are still funded, but they're not going to be filled for a substantial portion of the year, so there's going to be money within that police budget to move around for additional overtime if it's needed. There's nothing wrong with having them come back in and ask for funding, and you'll notice when the chief was here, and I, I just said a few minutes ago, it isn't a question whether we like someone or whether we work with them, but for all of the money that we're going to appropriate for the Police Department, we ask about, could we have one car dedicated to respond to complaints about fireworks, noisy parties? Well, if we have the staffing. What about traffic enforcement? Well, if we have the staffing. You know what, go back to your command staff, meet with them and say, the council's not happy, the residents aren't happy, because when we're here, we speak for the residents. It's not that Farwell, or Beauregard, or Lally, or anyone else wants something, we're representing people who live in this city. Go back and look at your staffing pattern, and come up with a plan, and tell us how you're going to spend the money. I do not believe that's unreasonable, and I think it's our job, so with that said, and I'll let my colleague comment on this, I would move to reduce the Personal Services Overtime Account for the Police Department by $300,000, that would reduce it from 1,390,414 to 1,090,414, and I would remind my colleagues, there is still money in here for court time, that is separate.
Second.
And we still have grants that come in during the year, so there'll be more overtime, but this just sends a statement that we're not gonna just write a blank check.
A motion has been properly made in second, all those.
On the motion, if I could, Mr. President, Counselors, if we just kind of turn back to the night when Chief Crowley was here, the vehicle request was 200,000, the mayor has authorized 250,000, that's great, they can buy five new SUVs, right, it's well overdue, well-needed, safety of the men and women in blue, but when I questioned the chief relative to his, as a department head, the amount he thought was sufficient in the budget for overtime, again, the mayor came up with an additional $200,000. Now, there's been a lot of us on the council for a long time, and I can honestly say, I never remember any Brockton City Councilor saying no when a police chief or fire chief comes before us for an appropriation, that's the checks and balances, right, we're the legislative, we're not the executive body, so if we go to over a million bucks, almost a million one, for overtime, it should be sufficient, but the chief understands if it's not, there's a mechanism for a supplemental appropriation to come back before us, though this is by no means a slap in the face to the men and women, the men and women that put their lives on the line every single day, and, and if they were here right now, they would acknowledge that. We're giving them the tools, they go out and they do the best they can every single day for the citizens, but at the end of the day, we, as the legislative body, have to do cost containment measures. It's not to say no, live on it, this is all we're giving you, you know, things happen, and overtime appropriations are requested, but I think truly, over a million bucks in overtime right now is, is more than sufficient. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion has been properly made in second, all those in favor of the reduction? All those oppose? The motion carries. The motion carries. Counsel Fowell?
Yeah, I have one more, and this is, this came up about three or four years ago. It's a minor adjustment in the mayor's budget, page 170, out-of-state travel, it's listed as 8540. Counselor Barnes, a couple of years ago, her last term, mentioned to him that it had always been $5,000. As a matter of fact, that's what he recommended last year, and he had no problem with that. So I would move to, I would move to reduce ordinary maintenance out-of-state travel in the mayor's budget from $8,540 to $5,000, a reduction of $3,540, consistent with what we've done these past years.
A motion has been properly made in second. All those in favor of the reduction? All those oppose? The reduction carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselors, any additional reductions, cuts? That being said, we're going to take a quick reset just to do some tabulation, and we shall return. Counselors, we're back on. After some computation, the budget has been amended to reflect a reduction of $2,315,922. And we're going to have a, the question will be on the amending of the budget, and we're going to do a roll call on that, just to be on the safe side.
ASAC?
Yes.
Border Guard?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Fowell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Nakastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Zero in opposition.
The reduction is adopted. Now, the question is on the adoption of the entire 2020 budget as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Border Guard?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Fowell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Nakastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, zero in opposition.
The 2020 budget is adopted. Counselors, I believe that concludes our budget season, and again, I want to just thank everybody that put up with us for the three days that we were here and throughout this small, short, one-hour meeting that we've had. But again, thank you very much for all that you do and continue to do, and we're going to take a...
Mr. President, we want to thank you for your professionalism and leadership those three nights as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. With nothing else on this particular special meeting of the city council, I adjourned that.